Recording in progress.
The notice requirement provided for the open public meeting law has been satisfied. Notice was properly given, said notice having been transmitted to the Courier News on Tuesday, January 6, 2025, as well as posting on the city's website. Clerk, may we have a roll call?
Councilmembers, Bridget Jones.
Present.
Cherry.
Present.
Graham.
Present.
Let the record reflect that Councilman Graham is present virtually. Councilman McCray.
Present.
Councilman Wyatt. Vice President Sessoms.
Present.
And Council President Hockaday.
Present.
All members present in our court.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Humbly we ask God to give her peace and the love of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will, and to grant the light of his spirit on all those who work for justice and peace. Amen.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of November 10, 2025?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? There being none, the meeting minutes have been approved. All right, we'll first move to discussion items. We have a presentation regarding the Public Works Watershed Improvement Plan for Greenbrook and Cedar Brook Park. The floor is open for whoever would like to present regarding that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Chris Perone. I'm an engineer at Pinoni Associates. If you don't remember, I was here back in October for one of these public information sessions. We're required, we're the permit to have two a year. Unfortunately, this year, both public information sessions were pushed to the end of the year. Next year, they'll be more spread out. We want to plan accordingly for that so that more progress can be shown between sessions. But since these two sessions were very close together, we're going to pretty much rehash what happened the first time and then discuss progress since we're at the end of our year for the first phase of the watershed improvement plan. Next slide. So we're going to rehash the agenda, the why, what, and how of what we're doing here and why. Next slide. So back in 1972, the Clean Water Act was put into effect, and since then, many amendments and MS4-related permits have been amended since 1972. This public information session talks about the permit that was enacted in 2023. It's 2025, almost 2026, and this five-year, it's essentially a five-year amendment cycle that goes for these MS4s. So 2023 will be finished pretty much in 2025, or 2027, sorry. Next slide. So why are we doing this? Ninety percent of New Jersey's waterways are considered impaired, which sixty percent of it is from stormwater pollution, which is basically runoff from rain vents. And all of this needs to be addressed per the Clean Water Act. Also, in addition, more frequent severe storms are occurring, and that's also bundled into the MS4 permit. Next slide. So back in 2018, municipalities were grouped in Tier A and Tier B municipalities. Tier Bs were more rural areas that had less requirements, and more urban areas were Tier A that had more requirements due to more impervious surfaces. And in 2023, they made all municipalities throughout the state of New Jersey Tier A, meaning that everybody is required to do the same thing. So nobody gets away with doing less. Next slide. So what's a watershed? Very quickly, a watershed is an area of land that collects water and discharges it to a certain point, like a stream, or a lake, or a river. Next slide. So the MS4 Tier A permit execution begins with data collection and inspection. At our last meeting, we were still doing data collections and inspections, and as of a few weeks ago, we have finished that process, and we've completely moved on to map creation, which essentially is the compilation of all of the information we found out in the field, in Plainfield, is now being digitized and put into a map that will be delivered to the town and the NJ Environmental Protection Agency at the end of the year. And then the last step is data analysis, which begins in the new year, which is essentially the goal is to take all the information that was collected and utilize it to execute the MS4 permit. Next slide. So when we were in Plainfield, we were looking at manholes, outfalls, stream sections, as well as interconnected areas between bordering townships of Plainfield, and putting that all together in GPS format, and then digitizing it into a map. Next slide. So here's a snippet of what the map looks like with one element added to it. Those are stormwater inlets, which are essentially where the rainwater in the street goes into a pipe. There are over 3,000 of them. We had to collect all 3,000 of those, over 2,000 manholes, over 40 outfalls, and all of that goes into the map. All of them, you know, if they're all turned on at the same time, it'll look like a bunch of different colored dots, and it'd be very hard to see, but this is just one element of what goes in the map. And of course, we have to connect all of them together, which is part of the inventory report as well, which is due at the end of the year. So all of them are connected, and we'll know exactly how water flows throughout the town, or the city of Plainfield. Next slide. So there's a lot that goes into the map. I only showed you one piece of it, but outfalls, discharge points that go not into a stream but into a ditch, interconnections are the connections between municipalities, inlets you saw, manholes, conveyance, pump stations, all of these things go into the map, and these will all be in a ArcGIS Pro map that will be given to the city of Plainfield. Next slide. Not only did we collect all of that information, but every element, every inlet, every manhole, every outfall, they all have attributes that make them different from one another, other than their location. There are different types of inlets, outfalls discharge to different streams, different streams have different classifications of pollution. All of these elements can be thought of as Excel tables that link to points, and every attribute has been assigned to every stormwater feature as of this point. So that was a pretty time-consuming process, but now we can go to any particular part of the town and know exactly what's going on and why. Next slide. So now that the mapping is done, the next part of the watershed improvement plan is to actually achieve the goal, which is to improve water quality, and to do that, we would have to address TMDLs, which are total maximum daily loads and water impairments, and then in addition flooding. Next slide. TMDLs are one subset of pollution that we see in Plainfield and in many municipalities across New Jersey. You see a map there with pink and purple polygons. The purple polygons have a total suspended solids pollution variant, which is a pretty typical kind of pollution, which essentially like debris from roads, parking lots, things that make its way into a stream that cause either wildlife to be impaired, which eventually reaches, you know, human health. And then we have fecal coliform in pink, which essentially like animal waste, pet waste, that also makes its way into basically drinking water, and we would like to address all of that. Next slide. There are six different Huck 14 watersheds, so there's six different areas that, there's six different points associated with six different areas where water gets compiled in Plainfield. And all of these areas have different types of impairments. Others include different pH values, PCBs in fish tissue, and total phosphorus, which is other kinds of pollution that affect human health. Next slide. So what's the mapping used for? So the map will be used to show the entire conveyance system. We can easily mark where water comes from and where it goes, and where pollution can go from one inlet to a stream. It's easy enough to, because these conveyances have direction arrows, arrows of flow, you basically have a whole network of, you know, stormwater elements to understand what's going on throughout the town. And this includes the pollution elements as well. Next slide. So Phase 1 is the inventory report, which is essentially all of the map creation and data collection. Phase 2 begins in the new year with the watershed assessment report, which is essentially problem-solving, how we're going to move forward with the information that was gathered this year, and that information will be due at the end of next year. We intend in the next year to have two more public information sessions spread out so that we can engage with the public on their concerns and their knowledge base of what happens in certain areas of town that's more, you know, kept under wraps that, you know, the public, that we at Pinoni wouldn't know offhand. Next slide. So the watershed inventory report summarizes stormwater systems in the city of Plainfield and its connections to water bodies and municipalities. That was done and will be completed at the end of the year. Next slide. The watershed assessment report assesses potential projects with estimates of the reduction in pollutant loading and funding needed to execute a full watershed improvement plan. Next slide. And then finally, the third phase is to summarize the proposed projects with improvements expected, comments received, cost coordination, and other regulatory programs, and implementation schedule. So that's the final plan. Next slide. So this is our second public information session of 2025. We have one in October, and we have one now in December, pretty close together. We're thinking about, in the new year, doing something at the end of maybe the spring, and something at the end of the fall to kind of have an ongoing communication progress with the township so that everyone's aware of what's happening and progress can be seen in greater detail due to more spread out meetings. Next slide. Does anyone have any questions for this? I know it's, you know, two months ago, but, yep.
Questions from councilmembers?
President?
Yeah, go right ahead, ma'am.
On one of your slides, which is titled "Which Stormwater Features," and it shows the number of storm drain inlets and manholes.
Yes.
So would you be able to go to manhole number 3,200, know exactly where that is located?
Yes. There's only 2,000, I think, but yes. They're all numbered and they're all...
It says, there's a storm drain inlet, which is 2,254.
Oh, inlets, yes, there's...
And the manholes, 3,236.
All right, so I put them, yeah. But yes, they're all numbered, they all have an ID associated with each of them. So you can say, you know, manhole 100, manhole 200, and it'll link you to that specific spot.
Is that like a GIS mapping or something?
It's a GIS map, yeah.
Okay. All right. That's it.
Awesome, thank you.
Are your public meetings only for, like, residents that live in flood areas, or is it just open to the public?
It's for everybody. It's the whole, it's all of the public of Plainfield.
Do you have an idea when those meetings will be held?
They're open to suggestion. They could be anytime, they can be held during these council meetings, they could be held outside of these council meetings. They don't have to be semiannually, they can be in greater numbers. We could have more of these if we want to have them during council meetings, maybe less of a presentation and more of, you know, have township members come up and say, hey, I live on X street, this street has terrible flooding in September, and, you know, we want this addressed. I know that also NJIT also has a hand in recording the flooding as of a couple months ago, and, you know, partnership with them might be, you know, encouraged as well to really understand what goes on. If township people have, you know, videos or pictures of flooding in their area, you know, those can be looked at as well. We can definitely have a dialogue on how the communication can go into the new year. I'm absolutely open to suggestions for how we want to do that. It's pretty open, so.
Thank you.
President, I have one question.
Sure.
Are these all marked that it was resident saw that an inlet would block, that that resident can give the number, the DPW, and say inlet number 2,200 was blocked?
Yeah, so the map has every manhole inlet, every feature has a number associated with it, and they can be turned on and off to show it.
Are those numbers there?
They can be turned on and off to be shown on the map, so that...
No. If I am walking down the street.
Oh, no, no.
And I see a blocked inlet.
Yeah.
Is the number there, I've seen the number in all the cities.
No, there's no number that correlates between, you know, being out there and seeing an inlet and going there. You'd have to, you can zoom into the map and find, you know, exactly where it is. Am I missing the point?
I don't know if I'm clear.
Physically?
Yeah. If I am casually taking a walk.
Yeah.
Down Front Street.
Uh huh.
And there is an inlet.
Mm-hmm.
Is the number of that inlet marked there so that I, if I know that that's a problem inlet, I can call DPW and say inlet 123?
It's not, no. No, there's no number in the real world.
What would it take for us to get them numbered? Because I've seen inlets numbered in other places.
Do you know, Derek?
Yeah, we're going to have the location...
Come up to the mic if you'd like to speak.
We're going to have the inlets all on a map, so if there's any kind of marking system that you guys can incorporate or that you're familiar with and would like to see, we can possibly add it to the locations.
That's something we're going to coordinate with our engineers, mayor to make work, and everything numbered, too. We'll do some little differently in Plainfield. We'll make that happen.
Okay.
Thank you. Follow-up questions from anyone? Okay, thank you very much for your presentation.
Awesome, thank you, Senator.
Okay. We will move to, it's an announcement that a public hearing for second reading and final passage will be at the voting meeting. We now have ordinances MC 202546 through MC 202555, which are scheduled for final passage as advertised. Resolutions, legislative by the items. Do we have consensus to add R 43125 to R 43225 to the voting meeting?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, those shall be added to the consent agenda. Okay, Department of Finance, would you please present your items?
Good evening, all. I have five resolutions for your approval. First one is resolution authorizing approval to amend the current year 2025 municipal budget by inserting two items of revenue and appropriation, two items being 2025 drive sober or get pulled over, that's for $7,000, and mayor's wellness program for $15,000. Resolution number 434-25, resolution authorizing transfers between current year 2025 appropriations of general fund of the city of Plainfield to a net $356,100. This is the transfer we typically do in November and December, December portion. Resolution number 434-25, resolution canceling $3,900,000 of special emergency appropriation. This relates to the special emergency appropriation we had for $5 million when we had the summer storms. This is the unspent balance that we are canceling. Resolution number 436-25, resolution authorizing approval to cancel taxes in the amount of $2,055.20 due to 100% disabled veteran. And resolution number 437-25, resolution authorizing the cancellation of erroneous tax sales certificate. What happened is that this property, the payment was made, but the property has two accounts, and there was a missed posting, and all of the monies went to one account, so we have to cancel that tax sales certificate for the second account because the payment was made. That's the end. Are there any questions?
Any questions from councilmembers?
I have a question.
Go right ahead, Councilman Jones.
For resolution 435-25, so the 1.1 million, what was, was that used for the cleanup? 100% of that was used for cleanup?
It's not all cleanup. Part of it was for DPW. I did have the notes, and I forgot to bring them, and I didn't email them to you. I left them at my desk.
I could tell, I could, you want me to go through it?
You can.
So a bunch of it is DPW cleanup. A lot of that is labor, labor costs, and other labor costs related to the grant that we did that required labor to work, or other, any other labor costs that were associated with effects from either of the storms. So that goes across departments. And then there was $400,000 last month for specific areas around the city that had infrastructure damage, and there was damage that was fixed closer to July, end of July, that was immediately fixed. The 400,000 is, the work is still to be done.
So we have a 400, that's the balance?
No, 400 is, of the 1.1, take out 400 from last month, that's infrastructure damage that hasn't been fixed yet. Then there's the infrastructure damage that has been fixed, plus the labor costs that were associated with both all of July and August cleanup, and then any labor costs that have come from, as a result of the storm since then.
So we've expensed that 1.1 million?
1.1 has been encumbered. Encumbered.
Thank you. No further questions?
Okay. Any other questions? Do we have consensus to add these items to the voting meeting?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, those should be added to the voting meeting. Next, we move to the Police Department.
I'll speak for him, yep.
Thank you.
Okay, the Police Department has three resolutions on for your consideration this evening. The first one is in regard to the boiler replacement project that they did in this building over on the police side, and the project is wrapping up, so they are looking to release the retainage for $31,213.29. The next resolution is an annual one they do around this time of the year for $7,000 to apply for and accept the drive sober or get pulled over year-end holiday grant. And the third resolution is requesting approval to purchase two vehicles. These are for the police fleet. These are like a heavy-duty Explorer that is specifically outfitted and engineered for law enforcement. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from councilmembers?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
The R 440-25 for the two vehicles, are we trading any vehicles in this place, or are we just buying them outright new, or?
These are being bought outright new. These are being outfitted specifically for the PD. Some of the vehicles that the PD has in their current fleet are going to be used for, I mean, first of all, their fleet is kind of short, so they do need two vehicles, even if they weren't moving two vehicles, but some of their vehicles have to be used for off-duty work because the vehicles that we have for off-duty work, some of them don't have heat, so we have to get them better vehicles for off-duty.
Okay.
Makes more sense to buy the new ones for the cops.
Oh, yeah, keep them new. Yes, thank you.
What do our auxiliary officers drive?
I don't believe they do drive. I don't believe they do drive. I think, I think they ride with an officer. Yeah, I've never seen them driving a police vehicle.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, do we have consensus to add this to the voting meeting? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, those should be added to the voting meeting. Department of Public Works, the floor is yours, Director.
Yes, Department of Public Works has three resolutions for your approval. Resolution R 44125, this is authorizing us to remove the funding from Fillmore and Summer Avenue over to Berkeley Avenue and Dixie Lane. This is for the, this is the county infrastructure grant that we have, and the purpose of this is because we had some... And the purpose of this, because we had some upgrades being done with our gas mains. So, so we didn't lose the $135,000 grant, we wanted to move it to two of the other streets that were done, so we can cover the cost for that. So this is covering Berkeley Avenue and Dixie Lane as opposed to Fillmore Avenue and Summer Avenue. This is 2025 construction, this is through a grant that's from the county, $135,000. So we moved that, those dollars over to that. Those two streets. Resolution 442-25 authorizes the ESE and J co-op. This is, uh, for Murray paving, the concrete to store speed humps in various areas of the city. Total 232, $314,000, $135,000. And resolution 443-25 authorizing a change order in, in the amount of $8,200 to Newington and Vernon Associates. This is for work that was done, uh, that's ceded the amount of time, a lot of time for the project done with the Rushmore, uh, plots. So the total is $8,250.
Questions from council members?
Council President?
Yes.
Um, Director, first of all, thank you for all the work that, um, the Public Works Department is doing around the city. When I see the repairs and the trucks, I don't consider it an inconvenience because I know it's a short-term inconvenience for long-term improvement for the city, so thank you. Just real quick, simple question. So regarding the Berkeley Ave and Dixie Lane, are you saying that those projects are done? Or we're going to do them in lieu of the Summer Ave and Fillmore?
We, that was all, we were hoping Fillmore and Summer would be done, so we just transferred them. They were done. We got them done in time, which means Dixie Lane, Berkeley Ave. So we're gonna move the funding over to the county, we're giving this approval to do that, based on you guys' approval tonight. For those two streets to be used, lots of that $135,000 grant as opposed to losing it, because this grants by the end of the year, December 31st. So we wanted to make sure we have everything approved. If I have those two streets added and they went and inspected them, they meet the qualifications to be done to be added.
And when you say done, what does that include? Is that paving and side, like, could you just suck a little bit?
Build and pave, use your handicap hands to put them in.
Okay, all right, thank you for that. Um, also, um, let's see, it is, uh, 442-25, you mentioned various locations. Would we be able to share with the public where those locations are, should this resolution pass?
Yeah, because once that, once it passes, they'll proceed to work, so, yeah, so it, you can notice to see once you guys decide to support it, so we can start adding those areas across town. The citywide areas, you know, it's probably.
Okay, so we would be able to share, we would be able to see the list of the streets and share it with the constituents so that they know that this is coming?
Yes, because, yeah, and we can notice out there too, letting them know they're coming too, so.
Okay. That'll help us be able to be proactive, should they say they weren't aware. And then my last question is regarding the Rushmore Recreational Complex and the payments, um, are we done?
Well, just about. We get into the end of everything, because we're still waiting for the things to come, the one building. The coast, because they're from across the country, so we haven't got those yet. We should be done, hopefully within the next few months, we should be finished with everything. This, this is just some additions that have to be added.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
When you said done, um, I heard that, what about the playground?
That, that's a project, Mayor, part of it was a different project.
You mentioned Rushmore.
Yeah, okay, Rushmore, well, as far as I'm sorry, the playground itself, Mayor mentioned, that, that will be done in the springtime. That's, that's another project, part of another major project that we have, but that's all for the same site and location. So that, we, we'll finish that portion in, in the springtime. And that's the playground itself. It's a 7,000-foot playground, that's going in, you know, all types of sensory equipment, etc., handicap, everything.
With the playground. The funding to improve the playground, is that separate pot of money from the, the building of the aquatics? So done in terms of the swimming side, we'll be, we still have a little bit more to go.
Yes, the splash park should be finished in the, in the next few months.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Uh, yes, Council President?
Go right ahead, Councilwoman.
Uh, yes, Director, down in the R 441-25. As stated earlier, we've been paving streets across the city for many of years now with the administration. Is there a way to put on the website, maybe like a tiered system? These roads were just paved, maybe have another color code, this road needs to be done soon? Just so residents can start paying attention and seeing one of the roads that have been paved, but have a timetable expectation of when their road will be paved?
Yep, because we're not trying to, as you know, the goal is to pave every road across the city. So what we can do to make it better for the residents, we'll look into it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, do we have a consensus to add this to the voting meeting?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, that should be added. Okay, we'll move to the Department of Economic Development. Director Fields?
Good evening, Council. I have resolutions 444-25 through 450-25. The first resolution is requesting authorization for application to the local finance board. This is for 611 West Front Street. This is in order for them to apply for a redevelopment area bond. The reason why this is needed by statute, when you go below the standard 10% on a pilot, there needs to be, it can only happen by a redevelopment area bond or by a master lease agreement against the property i- itself. We've agreed to go below the 10%, if you recall, because this was the project that granted us the $3.75 million in a community benefit that assisted with the health center. The next resolution is related to the Nishwain Group contract. This is our redevelopment and professional planning services. Their original contract was for $125,000. This is to increase it to $135,000. This doesn't change the overall budget. This will come from another consultant line item. On resolution 446, this is also looking at a professional service contract. This is for Think Wilder Architecture. This is for architecture services related to the Center of Excellence. Their original contract was for a little over $713,000. This is to increase it to s- a little over $797,000. The reason for the increase, there was a need to do some revisions to the design, including moving the pool at the request of the State Historical Preservation Organization. The next two resolutions, starting at 447. These are related to designating areas in need of redevelopment. The first one is located on Johnston Avenue. The next one is located on South Second Street. The South Second Street property is owned by the city. This is moving forward with the intention of building an affordable home for sale and a small homeownership lot redevelopment plan. On resolution 449, this is related to designating a developer. The developer would be designated for 1405 to 1479 South Avenue. This is the location of the Old Fine Fair. This would be to redevelop the site with 150 units, 15 being workforce development units. It would also include a commercial area that, with the intention of developing a grocery store again. The size of the grocery store can range between 11,000 and 20,000 square feet. It will also include a minimum of 265 parking spaces, as well as a community benefit of 350,000. The last resolution, 450, is related to liens placed on properties. This is associated with property maintenance inspection. This was for the cleanup of 37 properties that range anywhere from looking at debris cleanup to vegetation and also boarding up. Any questions?
Vice President.
Council Vice President, go right ahead.
Thank you. Madam Director, just a few questions. On 448, you mentioned that the property on South Second is owned by the city. Are you talking about Lot 7 or Lot 8?
Both are owned by the city.
Okay. My next question is regarding 449. You mentioned that the developer is considering 150 units plus a grocery store, etc. Is the grocery store contingent upon us, um, supporting the 150 units?
So it's the entire proposal together. They're proposing a mixed-use development with 150 units, as well as 11,000 to 20,000 square feet of commercial.
And my last question is for, on 450. Um, I looked at the list and some of those, uh, properties say that they're boarded up. Will they be, um, going to auction?
No, they're boarded up for safety, so a lot of times if we have a situation where a property is vacant and it's maybe getting vandalized for safety, to make sure there's not unhoused or any other police incidents that happens.
But at, at what point do we, um, I guess, contact the owners to see what their intentions are with having that property not be aborted up? Eyesore in our city.
So the, the property owners are contacted with the first violation before a summons is written. Then we go through the process of placing tax liens, then we can continue through the process where it goes to either to tax sale or condemnation.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council members?
Yes.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman.
R 448-25 to 656 and 658 South Second Street. Um, you said that's going to be a, uh, one-family home, correct?
It's going to, going to go into our small homeownership lots. The lot is about 10,000 square feet right now, so with 10,000 square feet, we can fit two of, two, two-family homes.
Okay. The reason why I'm asking is because I do believe, uh, seeing in the, in the backup, that this says this property has been vacant for 10 years?
Yes.
Right, okay, and then the soil, it was contaminated?
We'll have to do it. It'll be a part of the investigation.
Okay, all right, so will there be something noted out there, some sign or something that's, we'll know that this is definitely done, um, to the residents? I mean, that's important, especially if it's, the soil is contaminated, that, that's important.
It, it's a part of the disclosure that'll happen during the planning board presentation.
Okay. R 449-25, when you were talking about the 150 units and 265 spaces. I know you said something about, uh, a supermarket. I just want to know, is that guaranteed or is that, is that a possibility?
Well, we can't guarantee it. I can tell you that we have been speaking with the property owner and we have been speaking with grocers.
Okay, all right, yeah, because when you have possibility, it could be anything. Whole Foods can come there, or maybe another, I don't know, something else will come there, so I, I want to know if it was guaranteed because if we're gonna have this property, I mean, I want to see the ratables come in so that we can stabilize these taxes. Right, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilwoman White?
Yes, Council President, uh, R 449-25. Uh, we said 265 parking spaces, so do we plan on putting parking underneath? Because I was looking at the lot and both sides now, there is not 265 parking spaces.
There's going to be a parking deck built, as well as surface parking.
Okay, all right, and the other question was asked, because I know that the language did say maybe a grocery store. But I know it, it was the past meetings, probably three or four months ago, you said you were in talks with a grocery store, so has anybody showed interest in coming to Plainfield?
Yes, there's been at least three grocers.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, any, any other follow-up questions?
Yeah, Council President?
Yes.
Uh, Director, you mentioned a parking deck. On South Avenue, from, I would say, Woodland to Towne, there is no parking deck. No other property has a parking deck. I don't think that would be aesthetically pleasing. Do they intend to, I guess, place the parking deck in the back of the property?
Yes, so you won't be, the parking deck won't be visible from the road? The parking deck will be, um, adjacent to the train rail line.
Oh, okay, all right, okay, yeah, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Robert, for being remote. Uh, you may be able to tell he sounds a little different. He had a surgery. Um, so he's not able to be here in person, but it, it has some effect on his voice. Thank you for being here remotely, Councilman.
Thank you, Council President.
Okay, uh, any other follow-up questions? Okay, do we have consensus to add these items to the voting meeting?
So moved.
Second.
With the exception of 449-25.
Okay. Pull 449 from the consent agenda. We'll be voting on it separately. With the exception, do we have a consensus?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, uh, those shall be added with the exception of 449. Uh, the Department of Health and Social Services, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Council. I have two items, 451-25 and 452-25. 451-25 is a, is a recognition of the challenges that the residents of Plainfield have encountered, uh, in 2025 in a sense of social services. Whether it was WIC, whether it was SNAP. And it recognizes those that came together to help make sure that those residents who were impacted received the services that they, they should receive in what some are calling a manufactured, uh, crisis. So what, what this resolution also does is help us to understand what 2026 may look like. Uh, if some of the proposed, um, federal. I, I want to say something else, but federal, uh, challenges to grants and, and to various programs are enacted. It will certainly have an impact not only on residents and the state, but the nation as it pertains to social services. So I just wanted to make sure, and as, as does the division, directors want to make sure, that we put that out there as we begin to look at what 2026 will look like, when it comes to things like HUD, when it comes to things like SNAP, when it comes to WIC and all those other programs that are called safety net programs and, which are being, um, kind of eliminated. These are the things that we as a department function, also should say health as well. These are, these are what makes up our department and these are what, um, this is the work that we do. And so we just want to make sure that everyone, uh, in, in total, understands that 2026 is going to be a challenge, um, as we move forward. Resolution 452-25 is a resolution to authorize extension of a contract between Comprehensive Medical Nutrition Solutions to provide health, wellness, and nutrition education consultants. Uh, and this is a service that we have been working with for years. They do phenomenal work in working with, uh, not only seniors, working with the district and various schools to provide nutrition workshops, all types of workshops, whatever kind of workshops we need or requested of them. And this is also mandated by the New Jersey Department of, of Health. That's it for me.
Questions from council members? Okay, do we have a consensus to add these items to the voting meeting?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, and that shall be added. Uh, we'll move next to the Department of Solid Waste and Sewer.
Good evening, Council. I have two resolutions for your, uh, consideration tonight. The first one is 453-25. A resolution to purchase one new John Deere 524-wheel loader in an amount of $210,842.05. The next one is R 454-25. And this is a resolution authorizing the purchase of two new 2025 Mack 40-foot walking trailers in an amount not to exceed $201,592. Both of these, uh, resolutions and equipment attached is, um, from a capital, uh, plan that was approved early in the year. And this is just the process of purchasing that. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Okay. Anybody have questions for the Director? Hearing and seeing none. Do we have consensus to add this item?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, should be added to the voting meeting. All right, uh, that concludes the first portion of our meeting. We'll, we'll, uh, take a five-minute recess and come back to our voting. We'll take a five-minute recess and come back to our voting meeting.
To Councilman Wyatt, who voted no. I think that's a representation, a little bit of a display of some kind of integrity, or intelligence, if you realized everybody else was gonna vote yes. You know, why not be a no vote? No one is gonna get pushed through anyway, you know? Excuse me, Mayor. See, this is... I won't interrupt the meeting, and I ask you all to not interrupt the meeting. So, through the chair to the mayor, please do not speak while I'm speaking. You know? But yeah, I'm against the salary increase for many reasons. We still don't have a clock. And that's directly related to the salary increase for the mayor from going to eighty-five thousand to a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, and we don't even have a clock. Nobody's thought about getting a clock? 'Cause I'm gonna start... I've been coming here, but what I'm gonna do is... I'm gonna start holding a clock up.
Council President Speaker's out of order.
No, Dave, no, you're out of order. I'm allowed to relate my comments to the salary increase. I'm talking about the fact that we don't even have a clock facing the public.
Council President Speaker's out of time.
The council president does not need you to step in.
The clock has gone off.
Okay? So, we're not gonna do that again tonight. When I come back, you're not gonna do it again to me.
Thank you. Anyone else wanna speak regarding this ordinance specifically? All right. Public hearing is now closed on this ordinance. May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage? And if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, MC 2025-46, Councilmember Briggs Jones.
No.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray. Wyatt.
No.
Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
Five in favor to oppose ordinance to be adopted on secondary?
Madam Deputy, please read MC 2025-47 by title and certify its legal compliance.
MC 2025-47 is an ordinance amending the schedule of salary and wages adopted pursuant to Article 14, Chapter 11 of the Municipal Code of the City of Plainfield, New Jersey, 1971, council member salary. It is hereby certified that notice of a public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier-News on November 17th, 2025.
Okay, the floor is now open for any member of the public that would like to speak regarding this ordinance specifically.
Anonymous. Yeah, I'm not feeling the salary increase either for the council members. And my main issue why, and I'm sure I will just say, there's a special charter that overrides state law in the OPMA, I'm sure that's coming. But when you guys decided to put on the agenda a hundred percent increase, which is an absorbent amount of money, I mean, just the optics of it, a hundred percent increase? I mean, obviously, somebody got in the ears of you and said, "Maybe roll this back a little bit. Instead of doing fifty, we'll do forty." But at two o'clock, 2:00 PM, at the day of the meeting, it was adjusted. But there was no forty-eight hours notice to the public, which OPMA mandates, to have the new amount on the agenda. When we're talking about finances and stuff like that, there should be adequate notice to the public. So, in my opinion, once again, you violated the OPMA by adjusting the amount of the increase on the day, the same day that you introduced it. So... Stuff like that is why I don't support a salary increase. You know, I wanna... I see these non-compliance issues and stuff. And through the chair to Councilman Wyatt, I like that you voted no last time for the council increases. I think that should be noted. And Councilwoman Jones, you as well, I think that needs to be noted. But we have violations with the OPMA. You can't just decide the day of a meeting that you're gonna change the finances of something that's on the agenda, and we still don't have a clock.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Okay, hearing and seeing no one else, I'm closing public...
There's...
Online?
One person online with their hand raised.
Please allow them in. Name and city, the floor is yours.
Caller ending in 149, you need to unmute yourself. The caller's still muted, so...
We'll hear from the person in the gallery. Name and city, the floor is yours.
Alterick Brown, Plainfield, New Jersey. Well, if you guys voted for Mayor Matt's salary increase, then, well, you might as well vote on the council, 'cause the council does everything. They're on call. They show up. They're on the media. They care. When we had a tragedy with the two women losing their life in the county park in our city, they showed up. These meetings will be packed very soon. We need to vote on more meetings in 2026. Let's have more calendar set meetings in the year of 2026. Let's do that.
You are heard.
Are you on the clock now?
The clock is running.
Okay. Are you on the payroll clock right now?
Yes.
Okay, so we got time. We got time, sir.
Yes.
Y'all want money? We got time. Wow, how dare you, Mr. Hockaday. How dare you?
Dare I what? I'm sorry, it's not back and forth. I'm violating my own rules. I am.
Thank you. I'll get up every ordinance.
Caller ending in 149, I see you unmuted yourself, you can speak.
Okay, Brenda Gilbert.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, the floor is yours.
Okay. Once again, I want to express the fact that I don't support... Brenda Gilbert, can you hear me? Okay, there you go. Once again, I want to express...
I think you have YouTube on and you're streaming it. You need to turn off YouTube because you're doing a feedback loop.
Okay, I hear you. Okay, there you go. That's it. I'm gonna get this before it's all over with. But once again, I want to express the fact that I'm not in support of these raises. And one of the reasons why I'm not in support of it, because once again, there is not an evaluative tool in place to evaluate the kind of jobs that you do in order to receive an increase in your pay, number one. Number two, this ordinance, like the other ordinance prior to this, when it increased rate, I feel that it is being presented in a very small group of residents in order to pass it. I think something like this should be presented to a broader... A broader crowd of citizens, because you would get a broader sense of what the community felt in terms of a raise. This is a very municipal, a very small group here, and so you don't really get the total feeling of the community. And if you wanna do something, if you got enough money to give a raise, then I wanna say this to you. I am one of those that have been serviced by the City Shuttering Committee, and I'm appreciative of all that you do. But I wanna say this to you, you need to be embarrassed by what you sent out to the senior citizens this Thanksgiving. You sent a little cornish in that it would fit in an Easy-Bake Oven, and I could've put two in the Easy-Bake Oven and had enough room, and a box of rice and a bag of beans. If you had extra money to give yourself a raise, you should've did better by your senior citizens. If that's all you was gonna send out to them, and then tax the name to it and put a little picture card in, and I don't know what that was for, unless it was supposed to be put in a frame and put up on something until I had a Come to Jesus meeting and I needed to meet with somebody to talk about anything, that the little card needed to stay out of the bag. So, when you're talking about a raise for yourself, also talk about these services that you give to the city, especially your senior citizens. Thank you, Brett.
Thank you. Anyone else online?
Yes, there's actually two more people.
Okay, go to them, please. Name and address, the floor is yours. Name and city, not address.
Bridget Rivers, Plainfield, New Jersey. I'm calling also in reference to the raise. I think that the raise is necessary. And the reason why, for far too long, we have been... Let me see a good way to put it. It's been very hard for us, for some people, to even run for office, because only the wealthy could afford to serve in the positions of power. Public office was rooted in privilege, not accessibility. As a former councilwoman, I know firsthand how demanding the role is. The work does not stop at City Hall. You receive calls all day, all night, and especially Councilwoman Cherry, who's my councilperson, because I'm aggravating, and I call her all times of night, sometimes seven o'clock in the morning. I think it's extremely important that people understand what you do. No one is getting rich off of being a mayor or a councilperson. But if you look at the raise amount compared to the budget of the city, it's less than 0.01%. So, why not give yourself a raise? All the work that's being done, you deserve a raise. And I'm fully, I'm in full support, and I heard one of the callers state, "Maybe take it to the public, take it to the public." Because you, as a councilperson, if you know you're doing the job that you're supposed to do for your constituents, then pat yourself on the back and get that raise. But if you feel that you're not servicing your constituents, then vote no and don't take it. But there also should be some kind of mechanism in place that if you vote no, there should be some type of something that you can sign so that you keep the same salary that you have this year, and you don't take the raise. I know the work that's, I know the work that goes into being a councilperson. So, again, and the mayor, so pat yourself on the back and take your raise with pride and dignity. Thank you.
Somebody else on? Okay, admit them. We're going to the people online now, 'cause I'll let you go after they go.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Name and city, floor is yours.
Hi, my name is Meg, I live in Plainfield. I guess I'm a little ambivalent about the proposed raise. I do understand that in order to kind of have someone do a full-time job, a full-time salary is required. However, it's a little hard for me to feel confident in, I guess, the council members when a person with a history of unprofessional behavior and more recently racist and xenophobic remarks is rehired. I know it was discussed at the previous meeting, the rehiring of Carmen Cita-Pile. However, I'm not sure if the people really had any say in that decision. I guess it's hard for me to reconcile how she can serve her community when she's openly hostile publicly and on social media, and these are the decisions being made by the council.
Does that conclude your thoughts?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Thank you for your input. Anyone else online? Okay, we'll hear from the last individual from the gallery.
Thank you. Quanay Chamblis, Plainfield, New Jersey. I'd like to speak on both of the raises. Considering the wealth gap in New Jersey and considering people that look like you and I are on the bottom end of that wealth gap, I am never going against, be against anybody that looks like me getting their coins, right? It's part of the reparations package as far as I'm concerned. But if you're gonna get your coins, make sure that you are men and women who are worthy of your hire. That is the only thing that I ask. And like I said, showing up to different things, doing things that anybody with a good heart can do, you don't have to be voted in to do these things, is not, to me, considered doing the work. Like I said last time, Councilwoman Cherry reminded me that she did invite me to two events, yes, you did. And I see Darcello online working, making sure we know what bill tracks need to be done and who's doing what. Great, Richard, I see you out there doing what you need to do, and these are the type of things that I would like to see people do. I do also have an issue with, I found out that you guys do not have like an employment liaison or HR liaison on the council, so you probably did not know about the rehiring of Carmen Cita-Pile. But now that you do, I would hope that somebody would step up and say something, because we should not reward bad behavior. It makes us look no different than the clown that's in the White House right now. We're doing the same things that he's doing, and this is why the people don't believe there's any difference between Democrats and Republicans, 'cause people in power just act like people who have power. It doesn't make a difference what title that they are wearing. Final thoughts? For the people who voted no because they're looking out for the community, under no circumstances should you sign anything, and under no circumstances should you not accept a raise just because you are acting with integrity. And I find it very strange that when someone else was in this position, when they were a councilperson, they also voted no to a raise. So, I'm not sure if they didn't know how much or how hard the work was when they were doing it back when they were councilpeople, but to get on the phone and suggest that there's something wrong with the two of you voting no, when she herself voted no the last time this came up, is hypocritical. So, I wanna thank you for the things that you do. Like I said, I don't wanna see you guys go without coin, but just make sure that you are workmen who are worthy of your hire. All right? Address the people, even the people who you don't like, who you don't get along with, that's part of your job, and that should be part of your raise as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, public comment is now closed.
Council President?
Yes.
Can I just address an issue that was brought up regarding the Open Public Meetings Act?
Yes, please.
NJSA 10:4-6 through 21. If you note, in the beginning of the year, we adopt an annual scheduled meetings. We have forty-eight hours per our charter to get the agenda out to the public to the extent of the items known. Adequate notice means typically special meetings, in which case you have to advertise exactly what is going to be on the agenda. And at those special meetings, you can only adopt an act on the items that were published and advertised. The agenda can be modified the day of, it can be modified during the meeting, there are times when we make amendments during the meeting, there are times where we add agenda items to the agenda during the meeting. So, I just wanted to make that clear, that no law was broken by amending that salary prior to the meeting, and that was completely proper. If the Corporation Council wants to confer or say that I was wrong...
No, absolutely, you're a hundred percent right, absolutely. There, an ordinance before introduction can be amended, can be done right up in the meeting, can be done at the meeting. So, I'm just concurring with everything that was offered by the clerk. I'd like to offer just another, Council President, if I may also, another item. This evening, there's been a couple of strange practices that we haven't seen before, and that's why I feel compelled to say something. First off, it's, the law is very clear that public comment is a comment period. It's not a time to stand in front of the microphone and just run out the clock. It's comment, it has to be spoken. So, if a member of the public, obviously, is mid-statement and is gathering their thoughts, that's one thing. But if the council president, as the presiding officer, if you believe that someone's just filibustering or just spending it to waste the time, that's really unfair to all those who are waiting to actually make comment. So, please, you are within your rights, Council President, if you see fit to tell the speaker that their time is complete and that their comment period is over. That's come straight from the Open Public Meetings Act. And finally, we have another statute which dictates ordinances on second reading and what the comment, and the comment must be, must pertain to the ordinance. Folks have gone well beyond the subject matter of the ordinance this evening in some of their comments. So, once again, that's, as the presiding officer, you have the right, as you have done numerous times and as you did this evening, to bring individuals, either to say that they are outside of the scope of what the ordinance entails, and ask them to refrain from such comment, or to tell them that their comment time is over. So, just wanted to reiterate that for the council. Thank you.
Thank you, for your counsel. Okay. So, we've closed public hearing. Now, we need a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage. Can we have a roll call, please?
Roll call, MC 2025-47, Councilmembers Briggs Jones.
No.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
No.
Sessoms.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
Five in favor to oppose ordinance to be adopted on second reading and final passage.
Madam Deputy, please read MC 2025-48 by title and certify its legal compliance.
Excuse me. MC 2025-48 is an ordinance of the City of Plainfield amending Chapter 2, Article 8-2D, titled Division of Health, and Chapter 2, Article 15-1, titled Office of City Clerk, to transfer the role of vital statistics to the office of the city clerk. It is hereby certified that notice of a public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier-News on November 17th, 2025.
Okay, the floor is now open to anyone who'd like to speak regarding MC 2025-48. Hearing and seeing none, public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage?
So moved, second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, MC 2025-48, Councilmembers Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessoms.
Yes.
And Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
That is unanimous, this ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Madam Clerk, please read MC 2025-49 by title and certify its compliance.
MC 2025-49 is an ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 16, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 5, limiting the use of streets to certain class of vehicles, 16:5-2, parking forbidden on all streets. It is hereby certified that notice of a public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier-News on November 17th, 2025.
Floor is now open to any one member of the public who'd like to speak regarding this ordinance specifically.
Alterick Brown, on the record, Plainfield, New Jersey. I have a question.
Well, make a comment, no questions regarding MC 2025-49.
All right, all righty, I know the ordinance.
We will answer the question.
Okay, all right. So, I have a question. What certain type of class vehicles won't be allowed on the streets?
If you have a series of questions, ask them all, and if that's your only question, then we'll get an answer for you. Is that it?
That's my first question. What streets are these? And, since you said I gotta talk, Mr. David Corporation Counsel, I'm gonna find out who you are. That's only two questions I have at this moment for this ordinance.
Okay, no problem. Okay. At the conclusion of public comment, we'll answer the question.
Oh, wow, okay.
Well, we can do it like that. I'm just as fine with that. I echo what the last speaker said, since we don't have those questions answered. Don't cut me off. I see you're about to do it. What vehicles? We could've answered the questions, but we'll do it this way. What vehicles? Which ones? Just like the last speaker said, I wanna know what vehicles you're talking about and what streets. And tell me I'm not speaking quick enough. So, we can talk about the vehicles, all types, not just certain ones. Weight, size, I don't know if the color matters, white vans, red vans, streets, wanna know all that. I'm gonna refer back to this for a second. Yeah, I'm just looking for clarification on that, because it doesn't clarify the what streets, 'cause that's important in saying, limiting the use of streets to, please don't while I'm speaking, very rude, very rude. It doesn't clarify the use of what streets, so that's very important, and the class of vehicle, and they're just doing it again, okay? Well, you want a raise, but you can, you know, talk the whole time, got it? So, yeah, like the streets, which ones are very important, and the types of vehicles, you know? School buses, you know, medical vans, cop cars, personal cars, ice cream trucks...
you know, school buses, you know, medical vans, cop cars, personal cars, ice cream trucks. I know the ice cream truck has been a thing for a minute, so does this pertain to ice cream trucks or not? I would like to know, and if it does, if this does pertain to ice cream trucks, I would like to know what streets we're referring to. Because the ordinance, the way it's written, it doesn't clarify that information, so. Just wanted to echo what the last speaker said. Thank you.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed, there being no one else. I'll now entertain a motion in a second.
Show move.
Second.
Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Roll call, MC 2025-49. Council members, Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessions.
Yes.
Counsel President Hockaday.
Yes.
That is unanimous, this ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
I would like to have that question answered, though, so if somebody has an answer to the questions that were posed, then please just do that quickly.
I'll answer it, Counsel President. So this is an ordinance we discussed last month to address people who are using vehicles that are not designated as commercial vehicles, but are being used for commercial purposes and are blocking people from being able to see when they get out of their driveway, things like that. So this is any overloaded construction truck and pickup trucks, large vehicles that aren't labeled as commercial vehicles, but again, are causing sight problems for drivers, and this is citywide.
So all streets?
Yeah, all streets, all throughout the city.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Deputy, please read the next ordinance on second reading and final passage.
MC 2025-50 is an ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 16A, Schedule 2, no parking certain hours. It is hereby certified that notice of a public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier-News on November 17, 2025.
Okay, the floor is now open to any member of the public that'd like to speak regarding MC 2025-50. Hearing and seeing none.
Alterick Brown here on the docket, on the record again, Plainfield, New Jersey. It's not going to hurt me or any of my relatives anyway, we live in the 4th Ward, we have parking. We have parking lots in our complexes, so it's going to really affect you and your votes for next year, because all these, all of them, I don't want to say it in a rude way, but Hispanics and different races, they're the ones that have all the businesses here, and they're the ones that we can't see when we're going. We can't see when we're on the road because of them, so it's really not, you know, it's not going to affect the African-American community.
Okay. Speak regarding the resolution.
Yeah, it doesn't say what hours. It just says no parking certain hours. So maybe we should start explaining this stuff a little bit better before we just vote things through and stuff. It's very inconspicuous. It says no parking certain hours. So I'd like to know what hours we're talking about. I think that would be important, to let the public know before we just push it on through. And let's show the republic, the public some respect. When you guys swore up, hold an oath that's under the authority of the people, not the state or a lawyer.
Okay, public comment is now closed. Entertainer? Oh, sure.
The agenda is sent out on Friday. There is an email blast that you can sign up for, it's also available on the website. Backup information for every single resolution and ordinance is included in that information, so any member of the public who would like further details on any ordinance, for example, the hours are clearly listed in this ordinance, so if anyone would like to sign up, they can send the clerk's office an email, and you will have that agenda, and you will have all the backup information.
Okay. So the hours just weren't posted in the title, correct?
They weren't posted in the title, but they were posted in the backup.
In the information, okay, thank you. Okay, can we have a motion in a second to adopt this on second reading and final passage?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, MC 2025-50. Council members, Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessions.
Yes.
Counsel President Hockaday.
Yes.
Unanimous, this ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Thank you. Madam Deputy, please read MC 2025-51 by title and certify its legal compliance.
MC 2025-51 is an ordinance of the City of Plainfield, County of Union, New Jersey, adopting an amended homeownership, small lots redevelopment plan dated November 6, 2025. It is hereby certified that notice of a public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier-News on November 17, 2025.
Okay, the floor is open to any member of the public that would like to speak regarding the MC 2025-51. Okay, seeing here and none, public comment is now closed. May I have a motion to adopt this on second reading and final passage?
Show move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, MC 2025-51. Council members, Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessions.
Yes.
Counsel President Hockaday.
Yes.
That is unanimous, this ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Thank you. Madam Deputy, please read MC 2025-52 and certify its legal compliance.
MC 2025-52 is an ordinance of the City of Plainfield, County of Union, New Jersey, adopting an amended scattered city-owned parking lots and adjacent lots redevelopment plan dated November 10, 2025. It is hereby certified that notice of a public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier-News on November 17, 2025.
Okay, the floor is now open to any member of the public that would like to speak regarding this ordinance specifically. Name and city? And the floor is yours to speak regarding this ordinance.
Nancy Piamar, Myrtle Avenue, Plainfield. I just want a clarification, I believe this was at the planning board last week, I was only member of the public there, and I do believe that the planning board made a recommendation to increase the three bedrooms to 1,300 square feet, and I just want to make sure that that, you know, that clarification got into the agreement, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, well, that question answered once we conclude public comment. Hearing and seeing none, I'll close public comment, and that question may be answered. Who wants to take that from the administration? Yes.
The recommendation made by the planning board was considered, we follow the state guidelines in terms of the size, so the size for a three-bedroom is looking at 1,150.
Okay, all right. Can we have a motion in a second to prove this on second reading and final passage?
Show move.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Roll call, MC 2025-52. Council members, Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessions.
Yes.
Counsel President Hockaday.
Yes.
That is unanimous, this ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please read MC 2025-2053 and certify its legal compliance.
MC 2025-53 is an ordinance of the City of Plainfield in the County of Union, adopting the JFK Muhlenberg Hospital Redevelopment Plan Amendment dated November 10, 2025. It is hereby certified that notice of a public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier-News on November 17, 2025.
Okay, the floor is now open to any member of the public that'd like to speak regarding this ordinance specifically. Hearing and seeing none, public comment is now closed, I'll entertain a motion in a second to pass it. Roll call, please.
Roll call, MC 2025-53. Council members, Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessions.
No.
Counsel President Hockaday.
Yes.
Six in favor and one opposed, ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Madam Deputy, please read MC 2025-54 by title and certify its legal compliance.
MC 2025-54 is an ordinance of the City of Plainfield in the County of Union, adopting Block 146, Lot 7 redevelopment plan dated October 16, 2025. It is hereby certified that notice of a public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier-News on November 17, 2025.
Floor is now open to any member of the public that'd like to speak regarding this ordinance specifically. Hearing and seeing none, closing public comment, can have a motion in a second.
Show move.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Roll call, MC 2025-54. Council members, Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessions.
Yes.
Counsel President Hockaday.
Abstain.
That is six in favor, one abstention, ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please, Madam Deputy Clerk, please read MC 2025-55 by title and certify its legal compliance.
MC 2025-55 is an ordinance of the City of Plainfield, Solid Waste Utility in the County of Union, State of New Jersey, requests the approval of adjustments to the utilities' transfer station, bulky waste type 13, construction and demolition type 13-C, disposal rates for non-residence, commercial business, neighboring outside municipalities. It is hereby certified that notice of a public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier-News on November 17, 2025.
Floor is now open to any member of the public that'd like to speak regarding this ordinance. Hearing and seeing none, closing public comment, can have a motion in a second to adopt this on second reading and final passage.
Show move.
And a second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, MC 2025-55. Council members, Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessions.
Yes.
Counsel President Hockaday.
Yes.
That is unanimous, this ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Okay, we now move to public comments, limited to resolutions and motions being considered this evening. Total of 30 minutes is allocated for the same. The floor is now open. Hearing and seeing none, closing public comment. All right, Mr. Clerk, would you please announce the consent agenda?
Consent agenda items have been identified as Resolutions 431-25 through 454-25, with the exception of Resolution 449-25, which is on non-consent.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Show move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call on the consent agenda items, Council members, Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessions.
Yes.
Counsel President Hockaday.
Yes.
That's unanimous, the consent agenda items have been approved, we now move to Resolution 449-25.
Okay, can you read the remaining items?
Show move.
No, is that the remaining items?
449-25.
Oh, so.
Motion in a second.
Okay, second, can we have a second? On 449? And then a roll call.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, Resolution 449-25. Council members, Briggs Jones.
Yes.
Is that a yes? Yes? Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
No.
Vice President Sessions.
No.
Counsel President Hockaday.
Yes.
Five in favor to oppose, resolutions been adopted. That concludes resolutions.
Okay. And there are no ordinances on first reading, and this is the last meeting of the year. We now move to general comments. Total of 30 minutes has been allocated for all public comments, each speaker will be given three minutes to speak on any matter at all. The floor is now open.
Good evening, Nancy Piamar, Myrtle Avenue. First of all, I want to thank all the council people who responded to my email over the weekend, and I appreciate your consideration of what the Historical Society asked, and I'm speaking on behalf as president, and I do have a couple board members here present. Prior to the Thanksgiving Day holiday, I sent a request for a resolution concerning the removal of two African-American panels at the Netherlands American Cemetery in the Netherlands. I made this request because a Plainfield resident, pardon me, because every time I say his name, I get emotional, is buried, Corporal Earl Morgan is buried in the overseas cemetery. Subsequently, I've been in discussions with Congresswoman Bonnie Watson Coleman's office, her chief of staff, and one of her senior advisors, to make them aware of this erasure of black history. Her office put me in touch with Representative Emanuel Cleaver's office, he's from Missouri, and I've exchanged emails and information with his office. Representative Cleaver and 33 other United States representatives sent a letter requesting information from the American Battle Monument Commission. I gave counsel and the mayor's office a copy of the letter, I have it here. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, I'm requesting that the Plainfield City Council consider passing a resolution in support of this congressional letter. Corporal Morgan is not forgotten by the Dutch people, and is not forgotten when I am asked to speak at veterans' events. Corporal Morgan fought for freedom that he never experienced. His story and the black liberators cannot be erased from history. Corporal Morgan was part of the 787th 84th Tank Battalion, and he grew up diagonally from the Drake House, and most probably played on the Drake House property when he was growing up. I have written some letters to his relatives seeking more information, I've heard back from one of them, I do believe one of his relatives works for the City of Plainfield. What people don't understand about the cemetery in Montgrotten, ever since the Netherlands was liberated by American soldiers, there's over 8,200 soldiers buried there, 1,700 on the missing panels there. The Dutch people have adopted, it's the only cemetery in the world where a community has adopted these graves. Families passed down these graves, even though they're not related to them, through three generations. There's a waiting list for adoption of these graves. The people, the Dutch people go out at least three or four times a year to make sure these soldiers are remembered, they research them. I have received emails from them, and I just want to make you aware, and I do believe that Corporal Morgan needs to be honored, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to light. Very important issue.
Good evening. Ayana Gilmore, Plainfield, New Jersey. About a month and a half ago, 10 of my neighbors and I, all residents of the 4th Ward, wrote a letter to the attention of Mayor Map, Director Dabney, and Director Abney. This letter addressed concerns of cleanliness and safety in the 4th Ward, as well as a desire to improve communication between the mayor and residents in the 4th Ward. I have had initial contact with the office of Director Dabney, which I really appreciate, and we do look forward to collaborating with you in your office, thank you. We have yet to receive any response from Mayor Map and Director Abney, or any representatives from their office. This lack of engagement from the local government is very disappointing, especially in Loo. This lack of engagement from the local government is very disappointing, especially in lieu of approved pay raises and Mayor Map's announcement to run for Congress. So I ask a question. This is mostly to Mayor Map, but also to the entire administration, who likely wants to see Mayor Map do well in the congressional elections, and also for those of you who are probably seeking to secure a position in the future on his coattail. So sincerely, Mayor Map, I ask how can residents of the 12th Congressional District trust in your ability to lead in Congress when your constituents, whom you are in office to serve right now in Plainfield, are observing a lack of engagement and a lack of commitment from you and your directors? We have also observed a lack of policy development and enforcement that improves the quality of life for residents. Thank you for listening to my concerns, and I hope I do not have to wait another month to hear from Mayor Map or from Director Abney about our concerns, thank you.
Good evening, Sebastian Torres, Plainfield, New Jersey. I'm here tonight as a sort of a continuation to my grievances regarding the disrespect that I feel the immigrant population in Plainfield receives constantly. At our last council meeting, I think it was evidently, or evident and clear, that prejudice and discrimination are not taken seriously here by the administration, and that in fact they are rewarded, which is an approach that I completely disagree with, because that reverberates through a community, and it sets a negative precedent. I don't know if any of you have been awake recently, but there have been a number of raids throughout the city by ICE. There are families being separated, there are people being abducted. I see it on the news, I see it on my blog, I see it on social media where there's hate being spewed against the immigrant community. And it's shocking, but what is more shocking is the silence from an administration that is spearheaded by a supposedly proud immigrant mayor who has not mentioned what is happening in town whatsoever. And just to put it in context, I've seen this administration put energy behind workshops to explain pilots to the city, on behalf of developers essentially. I've seen the mayor write letters to the Trump administration, to betty the votes, supporting charter schools. So that's the kind of energy I see from the mayor for certain things, but I have not seen any workshops aimed at, I don't know, perhaps helping immigrants understand their rights, helping immigrants understand what to do if they're abducted, if they're kidnapped. I have not seen any energy directed at any of that, Mayor Map, and it is quite pathetic, to be honest with you. I recently saw the article about the congressional run, the announcement, and Mayor Map said he is not afraid of a fight, he likes a tough fight. Tough fights are fought on behalf of those who are vulnerable. Tough fights are not fought on behalf of developers who pay you, right? I mean, that's my understanding, but I could be wrong. It's really, really sad to see the way that the immigrants are treated in the city. And Mayor Map also said he's ready to roll up his sleeves. For who? That's really the question. And, you know, that smirk says it all, because it's embarrassing, it really is. So I would like to see the city do more for the immigrants, represent the people in the city, not just developers, not just charter schools, not all these money interests who pour money into campaigns, but the people who live here, who are afraid to go outside, who are afraid to spend the holidays with their family, to go out grocery shopping. It's embarrassing that the city does absolutely nothing to call attention to that issue, it really is.
Hi, Chambliss, can you hear me, because it's kind of low? All right, thank you. Hi, Chambliss, Plainfield, New Jersey. This is for Mr. Shep, on behalf of the seniors. As soon as I became of age, the first thing I did was run down to the senior center, and even though nobody believed that I was of age, and they kept carding me, I am a senior, and I do participate at least twice a week on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Now, they call me the junior senior, because I am a junior senior, which means that I came up in a technological world, right? I had the little Commodore 64, so I've been doing computers for a while. My issue is the ability to register and pay for senior events from my laptop at home. Sometimes I'm tired, right, the medication makes me sleepy, and I just don't always have the energy to come down, but whenever I want to do something with the senior center, I have to make arrangements to get to the bank. I've got to withdraw cash money when nobody is using cash really anymore in order to be able to do that. Then I got to get another form, then I got to get transportation again to go back to the senior center and pay for the trip, and then I have to get transportation to go back home. That's a lot of money to spend just to be able to go on a trip with the seniors. If I can sit in my bed and register my granddaughter for ballet and pay the $25 from my bed, if I can pay for any trip that the recreation center does from my bed, and both of you are on that Community Pass website, there's no reason why I can't pay for senior trips. It has nothing to do with the people who were senior seniors, who may not be technological savvy, if they still want to go in, and I can't even do a check by mail, you don't even take a check. I could sit in my bed and send a check from my bank account, I can't even do that, it has to be cash. That's ridiculous for 2025. I don't know what has to be done to get that to happen, but whatever the recreation center is doing, the senior center should be able to do as well for those of us who prefer to use technology to pay our bills and do things. So if we can get that going for 2026, that would be great, because continuously telling me the excuse, "Well, Juanay, you know, all the seniors aren't online," that has nothing to do with those of us who are. And we're smart enough to be able to have them have the ability to pay cash if they want to, and for those of us who want to pay online, we should be able to pay online if we want to. So can we please get that moving for 2026? It can be done, because the rec does it. Also, I noticed that the sidewalk by the post office has been worked on, I appreciate you for that. I'm just sad that Terry didn't live long enough to see it, because she was my partner in that, that sidewalk was very dangerous, both of us. So I see that being done. Thank you. And I hope you win the Congress, too, I would, I'm actually going to work on your campaign. Thank you.
We got a public comment today, huh?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Council President. You can start my clock, you can start the clock, I'm sure you already did.
Why are you playing with your phone?
Huh?
What are you doing?
I'm trying to get something going, I wasn't ready, I wanted to make sure we're on public comments.
You playing music? That's not, that's not public comment.
We're doing a song, this is called Expression. You know what First Amendment expression is?
No.
We're doing a song.
No, we're not going to allow that.
Adrian Map with a stash in his lap, council's in it back making stacks on stacks, raise the roof, oh, raise the pay, Plainfield money on display, Adrian's pockets balloon like a boom, from maybe $5 to $115 per him, council sitting around talking about, yo, 25, we deserve more, better, so now it's 40 grand for sitting in a chair, Plainfield budget, y'all better beware, rubber stamp dreams, they call it a plan, counting their green with a gavel in hand, Map's getting paid, watch the money parade, council's getting raises, call it lemonade, sip, 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 while the cash flows deep, Plainfield dance to the salary beat, Map's getting paid, watch the money parade, council's getting raises, call it lemonade, sip, 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 while the cash flows deep, Plainfield dance to the salary beat. Yeah, this is what the First Amendment looks like and sounds like. Adrian strolls with a mayor robe grin, got the whole city saying, yo, that's a sin, council votes, hey, it's a payday spree, 40 Gs for us, that's democracy, playground vibes, hopscotch with the cash, jump two squares then dive in the cash, jump, they twist and they spin, taxpayer pockets, where does it begin, ring around the salary and pocket full of dreams, the council voted yes, and now they're busting at the seams, duck, duck, goose, everybody gets a slice, Plainfield pod, better roll that dice, Map's getting paid, watch the money parade, council's getting raises, call it lemonade, sip, 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 while the cash flows deep, Plainfield dance to the salary beat, ring around the salary and pocket full of dreams, the council voted yes, now they're busting at the seams, duck, duck, goose, everybody gets a slice, Plainfield pod, better roll that dice, Map's getting paid, watch the money parade, council's getting raises, call it lemonade, sip, 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 while the cash flows deep, Plainfield dance to the salary beat.
Okay. Work on your production, though.
Alterick here, on the record, again, Plainfield, New Jersey. The firefighters didn't get their pay, their retirement, something was wrong in their contract, so they didn't get paid, but everybody else's pay is good, everybody, that's not right. It's not fair, it's not right. And I hold each and every last one of you, in you guys' position, I hold each and every last one of you responsible for your position. I was raised under the wing of Ms. Joanne Hollis, and she taught me a lot about politics, and about urban development, funding and grants, ordinance, and so on and so forth. But I say all this to say that I'm no fool, I'm not new to this, I hold each and every one of you accountable for your job position in the city of Plainfield. And whatever I have to do, I put a view across, and to get what I what did at the city of Plainfield, that's what I'll do. If I get sick doing it, I'll get sick doing it. Because God has me, he has his hand on my life. And so when I speak, I don't speak from a place of this, I speak from a place of this. I was born and raised here, my family name very, very, but that does not matter, because I am alterick. I am alterick. And so everything I expect from you, Mr. Mayor Map, I expect it to be done. And everything I expect the council and all the board members, I expect at least your attention and your time, especially while we're in these meetings. And you, Mr. Clerk, you're talking, you talk about ordinance, and you talk about all these laws, but I'll be back, thank you. Happy holidays.
Thanks so much. Anyone online?
Three people.
Okay. Public comment in the gallery is now closed, we'll go to public comment online.
Caller ending 149, please unmute yourself, and if you're also on YouTube, please turn that volume off.
Okay, move to the next caller.
Good evening, this is El Rampador from Bayonne. I would like to, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, the floor is yours.
I would like to wish Commissioner Map good luck in Trenton at the Cannabis Regulatory Commission. She's going to have her work cut out for her. The Cannabis Regulatory Commission has proven itself to be ableist and discriminatory. For years, we've been asking them for wheelchair access to dispensaries, and for years, we've been ignored. The only person that didn't ignore us was Mr. Barker, Commissioner Barker, and he's not there anymore, so I'm hoping Commissioner Map will take the reins that Commissioner Barker had, and get them in line down there, because they're not, they don't care about people in wheelchairs. We have dispensaries without wheelchair access in New Jersey, and I've asked them for years for a resolution, a resolution that allows disabled vets and cancer patients to get into dispensaries. They built this industry on the backs of the sick, the dying, and the disabled, and we've been forgotten about. We've been forgotten about with Homegrow, patients go, a cancer patient goes to jail for five years for one plant, that's crazy. There's dispensaries in urban enterprise zones. Now, in urban enterprise zones, you get tax breaks for being in that zone, except if you're in a wheelchair, most of these businesses in urban enterprise zones have steps, and if you're in a wheelchair, you can't access the same tax breaks as able-bodied people. There's police stations and post offices all over New Jersey without wheelchair access. And when you see a step, a step is a wall, back if you're old enough to remember, there was signs on doors, a disgusting time in America when there was signs on doors saying, no Jews allowed, no gays allowed, some of you may remember, no colored people allowed, maybe you remember these things, it was a disgusting time in our country. Well, now, we still have that today. When you see a step, that's saying the same thing as no Jews allowed, no Irish allowed, same thing. It says, keep your wheelchair home, keep your crippled ass home, we don't want you here in your wheelchair. That's what that step says to someone in a wheelchair. It's absolutely discriminatory, and it's a human rights violation. So I hope that Commissioner Map takes this seriously, and takes her job seriously, and pushes for wheelchair access in every dispensary and every lounge. We need a resolution. Troy Singleton just put a bill in to add an urban enterprise zone in Burlington City. I'm going to call Troy Singleton, because they need to know that there's horrible wheelchair access in Burlington City. If you look at, go on Google Maps, you'll see, there's steps everywhere. You have to subsidize these ramps, if you're going to have an urban enterprise zone that's discriminatory to people in wheelchairs, you should fix it by sub-
Thank you. Next caller.
Caller ending in 149, I believe it's Brenda Gilbert, please unmute yourself.
Bridget Rivers, Plainfield, New Jersey. I just want to say congratulations to the council and the mayor for their raise, you guys deserve it, I'll say it again, job well done, keep doing the work for the city of Plainfield, for the residents of the city of Plainfield. Again, I support the raise 101%, job well done, thank you.
Any other callers?
No, it doesn't seem like Ms. Gilbert's been able to unmute herself yet.
All right.
Council President.
Yes.
I briefly say, just take a moment-
I briefly say, just take a moment. On Friday, we bid farewell to Marie L. Davis. We heard some powerful, comforting speeches and words of encouragement from Mayor Map, our council president, our clerk AJ, and the orator himself, over here Director John Louise, who did an awesome job speaking. So we can just take a moment of silence for her, and also Terry Sotacabeau, who is also an elected official here in the city of Plainfield. Let's ask for a moment of silence for the two of them. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilman Wyatt. Public comment is now closed, and I entertain a motion to...
Council President.
Yes?
I would like to make a comment.
Oh, okay, before we conclude. Go right ahead, Mr. Mayor.
You've heard a number of comments that were addressed at me, at my administration, by any number of people, and you've also heard from Alterick, who in one of his comments earlier was somewhat disparaging to the Latino community based on what he said. And as I've said on so many different occasions, Latinos have shown time and time again that they are industrious people, who are willing to open small businesses, whether landscaping, restaurants, boutiques, mortgage and real estate companies. They are not afraid to invest, to pool resources, in order to lift themselves up. And so they must be commended for their contributions and for being drivers of the economy. So it bothers me whenever I hear my African-American brothers and sisters consistently talk down and speak negatively about folks in the Latino community who only want to enjoy a piece of the American dream and want better for their families. And so I think that it's time that we put an end to those negative disparaging comments that are too oftentimes made and directed at people in the Latino, in the Latino community for no good reasons. As far as the comments are concerned about the ICE raids and me doing nothing about it, nothing can be further from the truth. As a matter of fact, I hosted, along with members of my administration, a round table at the P-PAC for the immigrant communities, especially the Latino community. And we had at the round table ministers from many Latino churches. We had immigration attorneys from the Latino community. There were faith-based leaders all present, and we address the issue of ICE raids and what one should do should one become a victim of an ICE raid, and it is something that we take very seriously. My writings have also indicated my position on the draconian immigration policies of the Trump administration. But you must also realize that not every stop you see is an ICE raid of the innocent. I have had many conversations with the police director about reported raids. On a few occasions, people were being arrested with judicial warrants. And so we have a tendency to assume that every time someone is stopped in the street, that it's an ICE raid. And the evidence that we have in our Plainfield PD, and it's communicated to me, when I inquire of my police director, James Abney, is that that's not always the case, that oftentimes there are bad guys that are being removed from the streets with judicial warrants and not, you know, arbitrary ICE raids. So I oppose ICE raids, whether the targets are Latinos, Somalis, Haitians, or other people from the Caribbean, because all of us are impacted by these raids. And this is not a time to stay silent, and I have never been silent, about ICE raids. I've never been afraid to speak up and speak out. When the mayor of Newark was unfairly arrested, I was there. I was there. I was at the courthouse when he was charged, and I was there representing people from the immigrant community, regardless of what persuasion. So it is very clear to me that these raids are not only aimed at Latino members of the Latino communities. We all watch the news and we see who the Trump administration is going after. Even citizens of this country, people that were born in this country, have been victims of these ICE raids. And so I will continue to be a voice in opposition for the draconian policies of the Trump administration, and I will not hesitate to speak out against the wrongs that are being carried out against the American people, regardless of immigration status. I have yet to meet a person who is illegal. I don't know what that person looks like. I meet and I deal on a daily basis with human beings. I have never met an illegal person. And so that's who I am, and my actions will be dictated by the positions that I hold and the things that I am passionate about. And I am passionate about pushing back against policies that target innocent people, regardless of whether you were born in this country, whether you were naturalized in this country. I will speak out, and I will stand firm in my belief that the policies that we see being carried out by the Trump administration are wrong, and they ought to be fought against by everyone, not just by the Adrian Maps of Plainfield, but by all decent-minded individuals, regardless of your status, regardless of your place of birth. We must all band together and speak out against the wrongs that are being committed every day across these United States, and that's where I stand. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Thank you for that clarification. Thank you for speaking up on the behalf of undocumented communities, Hispanic community. Unfortunately, the individual who spoke about it didn't get an opportunity to hear you talk about what you did at the P-PAC, et cetera, in furtherance of having Latinos understand their rights in the event of a raid. Also, after the meeting is also an opportunity to further engage with the mayor or his administration, but they seemed to depart early. That would have been a good opportunity to perhaps have direct engagement. So we do encourage that engagement, and whenever the residents need us. We're here, and we certainly want to engage. So, all right, with that, motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.